All right. Good afternoon. Pull the meeting of the Committee on Fiscal Affairs to order. Hello?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Is it a good afternoon?
Yes, it's a rainy afternoon. It's a good thing. First order of business is approval of the minutes for the meeting to be held on February 2nd. Is that up in mind? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So carries. Okay, we have a couple of resolutions, so we take it separately. First resolution is a resolution authorized colleges of the City University of New York to purchase high-end scientific equipment under the existing state of New York or city of New York or the City of New York Department of Education contract pursuant to a contract that results in appropriate procurement process and includes terms, contract terms and conditions that have been approved by the Office of General Counsel. Such purchases shall not exceed a total cost of $3 million during the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2010. This resolution will enhance the opportunities for faculty to obtain state-of-the-art scientific equipment during community's decade of science to provide further advanced instructions in research and allow the university to expedite the procurement process. Does someone move?
Some move.
Move second. Any questions? Yes, Professor Phil.
This is, of course, something very much in favor of, and I'm thankful that it's on the agenda. I wonder if we, this committee could be provided with a list of the equipment that was passed under the previous such resolution so that we see what good things were bought, purchased next time.
Yeah, I think that, sure. Last year we expended up to $7 million as part of the launching of the decade of science acquisitions, and we would be very pleased to give you a full report on the $7 million as they were expended by college.
Wonderful. Thank you. Item C, do you want to put that before we put it forward?
We'll have to amend it first.
So, process-wise, should I put it forward as is and then we'll amend it?
Um, okay.
We'll do that? Okay. We'll put forward the resolution authorized the City University to adopt a revised schedule of tuition and fee charges for students at John Jay in the newly, in the new online Masters of Public Administration Inspector General program effective fall 2009. This will be the college's first degree program available online. The students enrolled in this program will pay the prevailing in-state tuition for graduate students and a distance learning fee per online course, which will be $300, and let me asterisk that because we're going to discuss that, for the fall 2009 semester. Revenue from the fee will cover costs associated with face-to-face meetings at the Association of Inspector General Conference as well as technical support services for students that are not already available to all John Jay College students. Before we put forward the motion, we should discuss the amendments.
Okay, thank you. After further consultations, what I'd like to propose is that we accept the resolution minus the $300 per semester fee, and the reason I would like to do that, for two reasons. One, I think that we should discuss it a little bit further at the college and university level, and secondly, we're prepared as part of our investment program, you know, to cover the costs associated with the program. The fee in the initial year was only going to generate a little under $40,000, so it was not a lot of money to sort of help launch the program, and I believe that we, in our investment capacity, can afford to fund the program without, at this time, pushing toward the fee. So I'd like to rebuttal the fee at a later date, whether it's at a June board reading or later on in the fiscal year, and accept the rest of the resolution to approve the in-state tuition. We've got amendment, Mr. Chairman, but with that proposal, I'd like the committee to consider the amendment.
Would like to move forward with that, a motion with the amendment together?
Yes, sir.
Second. Any discussion?
I'd like to comment about this. This is an initiative that's exciting for the college, and as a member of the faculty at John Jay and as the head of the Faculty Senate at John Jay, I'd like to say that because, as I've been told, this program did not have to go through governance because it's not a new program, it's a different delivery of a program. We did not really have a chance to discuss this at the college in a wide way, though it looks like a very good program. So today, I met with President Travis and Provost Bowers, and we agreed that we would have a resolution coming for our governance by this semester to develop an assessment and evaluation process, an annual assessment and evaluation process, to, for this program and to help us decide if we want to move toward a completely online program. This is a hybrid program, though mostly online, and that we would have college-wide discussions about this each year as we see how it works and to what extent it benefits students and how we could improve it. So with that agreement with the Provost and the President, I will be voting yes for this resolution. Thank you.
Any other comments? Any other questions?
From our standpoint, the important thing is that the issue of the fee be discussed on campus through governance, and if that was not the case, we will pull the fee component of this until that deliberation has taken place.
I must say, I think it's a wonderful resolution to charge in-state tuition for a non-learning program, and I think that's a very important precedent that I gather this is being set for the university, though specifically for this program, I understand, but it makes us competitive as a university, and it's only fair if the students aren't using our physical facilities and heat and water and so forth. So thank you for doing that.
The motion, it's been seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And the last item is item D, a resolution authorized General Counsel to execute a contract on behalf of LaGuardia Community College for the installation of a new telephone system under existing New York State contracts. Such purchase shall not exceed a total estimated cost of $600,000, chargeable to the city capital budget. The existing phone system is well past its useful life and will no longer be able to serve the growing demands of a college in terms of capacity and capabilities. Motion? Anything to get rid of rotary phones? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed? All right. Investment subcommittee.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
And we can donate it to a museum?
Yeah, right down, we'll go into some money.
Thank you very much. The last time we met, we advised the subcommittee on investment that Cambridge Associates will be returning today to give you a market update as well as to provide you a, the implementation of the asset allocation policy, principally where we were going to go with respect to emerging market managers and the like. So I'd like to first call on Janet to do a brief introduction again, and the, our development from Cambridge Associates to the market overview and their specific recommendations for the committee to consider. Thank you. Janet?
With us today are Mark Vellar and Thomas Schmidt-Jefferson from Cambridge Associates, and in the time allotted, we're going to just briefly cover recent performance, the portfolio transition, and recommended next steps in terms of implementing our new asset allocation. So with that, I'll turn it over to you and the portfolio performance.
Well, we'll hit on the performance first, and there is a little bit of a relatively good news since the last time that we met, particularly in March. Using your asset allocation and benchmark returns, we estimate that the portfolio is up about 5.2% in March, so that brings your returns to negative 5.5% for the first quarter, calendar first quarter. By comparison, the S&amp;P 500 is down about 11% over that time period, so the conservative sort of go-slow approach to asset allocation and implementing the new policy portfolio has helped preserve capital during a down market. As we sort of shift gears and talk about the opportunities in the capital markets, certainly, I know we talked about this the last time, the markets have been hit pretty hard, and that's made valuations relatively attractive. You know, a lot of the managers we talked to talk about opportunities they haven't seen in their investment careers. So we still, we think that there's some good opportunities for talented managers to pursue, but again, in the near term, there could be some downsides, so we still think the risk isn't out of the market. Risk is never out of the markets, but we think investors with a long enough time horizon that can weather the volatility of equity markets will be served quite well. Markets buying at today's prices has rewarded investors over a long-term period. We've been working with the staff and the committee to determine which investment classes look the most attractive and which ones we should set as a priority to implement the new policy portfolio. And as many of you recall, we talked about emerging markets as something that had been beaten up considerably at the time. The valuations, P/E ratios were in the sort of mid-single digits, P/E's of six. You know, growth prospects, we think, looked more attractive than the developed equity markets. To the large extent, particularly in Asia, these markets avoided a lot of the debt problems that the more developed markets have incurred. So to summarize, we thought it looked cheap and it had better growth prospects than the developed markets, and when the economies recover, we thought they'd be better positioned to rebound and perform the developed markets. So that was the first asset class that we wanted to look at to start diversifying. We've been through a process where, working closely with staff, we've really scoured the universe of emerging markets managers. What we did is we took a look at, you know, a number, we tracked 40 or 50 emerging markets managers, narrowed that list to about 11 to really focus our efforts on with the staff, conducted sort of a paper search on that long list, and narrowed it down to four finalists to interview. And from those four finalists, we, you know, working with staff, thought that Aberdeen was probably the, a good fit for this group as an emerging markets manager, and we'll talk a little bit about Aberdeen in just a minute. To fund Aberdeen, what we're recommending is that since emerging markets are up about 34% since their last meeting, they've really gotten the rise with the market increase. We are suggesting that you average in to that allocation over time, and I've been working with staff and are proposing three tranches, starting with now. Aberdeen's minimum is $1 million. Put $1 million to work, and then consider bringing that up to the 5% policy target over the next couple of quarters. So that's the asset allocation recommendation. I'll let Thomas talk a little bit about Aberdeen in particular, and then we can open up to questions.
Also maybe saying where we would take the money from. I think we would take the money, our recommendation would be to take it from Advent, which is your convertible bond manager. They had a nice performance in March because convertibles came somewhat back, and we wouldn't eliminate the Advent position altogether, but we would draw it down over time because ultimately, this is one of the areas that we have not included in the final asset allocation, so it's just a matter of moving closer towards the final target location that we adopted back in, in late 2008. So that would be our recommendation. I hope you all have some material from us. If you could turn to the page, I'm sure my page numbers are not like yours, but page number two, it is on mine, and they look like this. It's a table that shows three managers. And we chose, though, our recommendation is very firm at Aberdeen. We chose to include one of the other active managers that we included in the search, the SARD Asset Management, just to give you a comparison, and we also included an index manager again for comparison purposes. I will, though, concentrate mainly on Aberdeen when I talk about the characteristics of this firm. Aberdeen is a publicly traded, large management, asset management firm that's UK-based. The emerging markets product that we're looking at today is based in a combination of London and Singapore, but they have research people in other places, especially in Asia and Kuala Lumpur, and other places in Bangkok and other places in Asia. They have a very long track record. They've been managing emerging markets funds since they started the firm back in 1983. They have a very, very stable team, very few departures, and we think very strong, probably one of the strongest in the, in the business. It's led by a manager called Devon Kalu, and there's been, he started, he was with the firm before, but he stepped into the portfolio manager role back in 2005, and we think is a very good, is a very good portfolio manager. They have a very conservative strategy. Their main focus is on high-quality growth companies, but their sort of mantra is we want to know the stocks that we invest, we invest in. And obviously, every manager would probably say the same, but these are more or less religious about it. They, they will meet with manager, management of the companies that they invest in four to five times before actually making an investment. They insist on their stocks having a track record, so they will typically not invest in any new and unproven firms, and that has served them well in this very environment, in this emerging markets has more risk, and so focusing on even higher quality in the companies have served them well. It means that they will and have historically preserved value in down markets, and they did so in 2008 as well as they also did back in 2000 when emerging markets suffered a bit. They will sometimes lag, but not always lag, in up markets, especially if the market is driven by sentiment more than sort of fundamentals. In those markets, they tend to lag, but sort of sustained rallies, the growth aspect of their strategy makes them perform quite well. They focus on balancing sheet strength with, obviously, also in this market was, has been, has been a good, good thing for them. One thing to note is that they're not a closet indexer by any, by any stretch. If you look at the bottom of the chart where you can see the country weights, you can see that there are substantial differences between them and the index that you have on the right-hand side. So there are, that can create deviation from the index performance. So far, it's been, especially in 2008, it was a good thing, but there can be periods where they either misposition and the markets position differently, and so there can be underperformance versus benchmark, and that's something to be aware of. Also worth noting is that they have quite big asset under management. If you look at these three products, it looks like they have the lowest, but one have to bear in mind that they also manage other strategies like an Asia-Pacific strategy that has emerging markets growth. So their total asset under management in sort of emerging market countries is probably closer to $15 billion, which is large, but has, doesn't seem to have impacted their performance sort of in the, in the long run. If you turn to the next page, page three, and I won't go through all of these pages, but I will point out, if you look at 2008, you can see that we have the Emerging Markets Index in red. You can see that in 2008, that dropped 53%, and Aberdeen had a 42% performance. Now, in absolute terms, obviously, nothing to be proud of, but in relative terms, and this is, in many respects, a relative game. They are forced to be in the market that they invest in, and so the 42% was actually quite, quite heroic in that market. And you can see in 2000, they had more or less the same size of outperformance, and so they do actually have a track record of producing well, good returns in down markets. But you can see in years like 2003 and, and 1999, you can see that they have also outperformed in some of the bull markets when, again, there's fundamentals driving those. Also important, if you look at the 10-year track record, now we're in the bottom half of this, of this chart, you can see the 10-year annualized return. Their return is 15.8 versus the benchmark of 9.3, so that's a more than 6% outperformance per year. Now, obviously, no guarantees in this, in this world about that lasting, but we think that their strategy is a very sound strategy for that. On the next page, just in terms of portfolio positioning, you can see that they have a little less in Asia-Pacific than the index, and they have a little bit more in Latin America, and this is part of their portfolio positioning. Every emerging markets manager will have to come to good tips.
Can we go back to page three quickly?
Yes.
On the bottom of page three?
Yes.
The updated return. It looks like the market index for the, well, just, let's just look at the month of March.
Yep.
The market index was 14.4, they performed at 10.9. For the period 123, I don't know why it's 123, but let's accept that for the, for now, January 23rd through the end of March, their Aberdeen's return was 4%, but the market index was 11.2.
Yes, this is, this is, this is part of the, this is part of their, what I said, when rallies are driven by sentiment, and this latest rally have been driven by sentiment, they will lag, and they did. There was a very sharp reversal from a downward trend in their defensive stance that helped them with a good return back in 2008, made them lack in this. We don't think necessarily that all the, the risk had been wrung out of the emerging markets, the defensive stance that they have had and they still maintain to some degree will help them even going forward. So we think it's acceptable to underperform even, even sizable underperformance like this in order to maintain that, the defensive stance, and it's a, it's hard to, hard to do both, to outperform in, in, in down markets and then outperform in up markets as well. At least, there is typically a transition period where you need to translate into, to the new, new market environment.
Yeah, part of that's also they're underway to China. They've taken kind of a cautious approach to China, and that served them well last year, but during this rally, China's rallied quite strongly, and so they've been left behind a little bit. So it's just something to be aware of, but if China continues to perform extremely well, they'll, they'll trail a bit.
And why the 23rd of January and not January?
It was, we had the last meeting, the 22nd, so it was since the last meeting.
Okay.
On page five, if you have the same one, this is the risk-return graphs. You can see that clearly what we're aiming for here, what we're hoping for a manager is to be in the sort of top right-hand, top left-hand corner, and if we use that as a, as a measuring stick, you can see that Aberdeen, the blue dot, has positioned itself better than others over time, both five and 10-year period. Now, some of that is endpoint-sensitive, so if you had to look at last year, they still would have been in a good position, but maybe not quite as strong in terms of the other managers. And then finally, on the, on the next page, page six, this is the last page I'll cover for taking questions. What we have here is floating bars, as we call them. These are the quartiles of performance for manager peers, so other, other emerging market managers in our universe, and you can see that they rank frequently in the top quartile, but you have periods where they dip down, like in 2001, they were in the, in the bottom quartile, and that's pretty typical for managers. This is the first time we've gone through a manager search with you, so we thought we'd share some of the analysis we've been doing, and obviously, we've done much more analysis with staff leading up to this meeting in order to, to evaluate these managers. But these are some of the, some of the analysis that we take a look at to see consistency in performance, and also, you know, whether they sort of over time have been in the, in the top half at least for considerable time, and we think they are.
They active managers?
They are certainly active.
And how does, you know, what about their fee structures? They have to manage?
They have, and we can.
It's 95 basis points. It's a mutual fund vehicle, so you have daily liquidity. And 95 basis points is, I would consider that an institutional-type fee versus the retail would probably be 180.
Stable, stable portfolio managers over time?
Very much so, very much so. The three key, key men there, Devon Kalu has been with the firm for a long time. He took over again, as I said, as a portfolio manager in 2005, but even before him, there was, and then they're still around, Peter, Peter Hames and Hugh Young, the two other sort of key investment persons there, and they, they've been around since '88 and '90 respectively, so a very stable team. And we have, we actually have on the fact sheet on page eight, we have the name of some of these, some of the investment professionals, and you can see that the most recent addition was 2000, so, so we're the stable team. Oh, there is one in 2005, sorry about that.
Questions? Carrie?
What's the average turnover on, because it's a mutual fund?
It's low. It's actually a very low, low turnover fund. You can see that on page two. We have the, sort of mid, mid on the page, you have about 14% annual turnover, which means that they, their average holding time is somewhere between three and five years. It varies a little bit, but somewhere between three and five years.
I'm just trying to prove this so quickly.
Janet?
Did you, I mean.
Would you, you recommend this?
I do.
Highly recommend? Just give us your view just.
I believe that Aberdeen has had a very long-term, consistent record of outperforming the index. We did speak at length about the recent underperformance to the index and agreed that this was, you know, a short-term situation in a market dominated by sentiment, as Thomas indicated, but that looking back upon historical returns, it was hard to make a case to index the emerging markets entirely.
I know we're going to phase in, if we move forward, if we, if we did it all at once, just give me a feel for how many dollars we're talking about that we're going to.
A million would be the first, so that's the minimum.
About five.
The first tranche would be a million, but all in about five million.
Five and six around there.
Somewhere in five to six million range of a percent. Okay. All right. Any questions? Okay. All right, so we need to have a vote for the committee. I'll entertain a motion to move forward. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Redwood.
Thank you both. Mark and Thomas.
Thank you.
Page three of our meeting, the audit subcommittee. I think I saw Shelley out there somewhere. Come on up, Shelley. We're going to quiz everybody on those large books here.
By weight?
Yeah, by weight. Was it only a year ago we said this? It is one more reason.
Okay, I'd like to, with your permission, with the chairman, call on our controller, Barry Kaufman, to introduce the partners of KPMG who will issue the A133 and internal control report. Barry?
Excuse me, thank you. I think the partners from KPMG are not strangers here. To my right, to my right is Aaron Shimbary, who is the senior manager on the, on this engagement, and to Aaron's right is Shelley Massey, who is the partner in charge of the audit. The A133 is required, it's an audit that is required as part of our participation in the Title IV Federal Financial Aid Program. The report on internal control talks about the findings that the auditors make when they look at operational managers at the eight colleges that they visit each, each year, including the central office, the university controllers' office, as part of their audit. So let me ask Shelley and Aaron to present their findings now.
Thank you. There has been a PowerPoint presentation that has been passed around as well as the management letter and the single audit, which I think you received in your materials. There are two items on the agenda, as Mary mentioned. The first, we will review the management letter, and the second item on the agenda are the audit results for the single audit. So I will begin with the management letter. Each year, as we plan for the audit, there are eight colleges that we do visit. They are rotated, so each college is visited at least, at least three years. We determine what those eight colleges are going to be based on the rotation policy, whether or not there have been any management changes there, or what the previous audit results were, and those eight are listed on page three. So those eight had current year comments. The remaining colleges, we do inquire on the status of the previous comments, so all of the status is updated for the prior year recommendations for all of those that were not visited in the current year. On page four, we include the areas that we focus our internal control test work on. So the management letter comments principally are driven out of the results of these procedures, and we do look at tuition management, cash management, procurement and property management, information technology, and human resources. And these are looked at among all the eight that we visit, and the applicable procedures are also tested at the university controllers' office. On page five, we've highlighted the three comments that are included in the letter that relate to the university controllers' office. The first is the census data for retired employees. If you remember, when I was here, I believe in November or December, when I presented the results of the audit. presented the results of the audit, this was actually a comment that I had made, that the TIAA retired employees, that the university does not maintain the records, the employee records for those. So while the actuary does make assumptions to come up with estimates that we did feel were reasonable, we are recommending that a process be put in place to begin to retain these employee records. The second comment is regarding procurement management and procurement processing. This is a comment that's new to the university controller's office, a portion of the letter, but has been previously included in all of the colleges sections in prior years. And we brought it up to this letter this year because that it relates to the process, and a lot of the colleges still have a manual process. But since we do know that the university is implementing or in the process of implementing an ERP system, and that really is resolving this comment, that we brought it up to the university's portion, because the recommendation was obviously the same, and the response was going to be the same. So while not a current year issue, something that's in the university controller section portion for the first time. The third comment is regarding financial aid refunds. This is a comment that has been in the letter in the past, does relate to the A133 findings that we have had. We do continue to have findings in this area, but for the first time, there was no calculation errors. We did just notice that there was timeliness. So if you recall in the past, there were calculation errors with respect to refunds that needed to go back to the federal government for Title IV overpayments, as well as a timeliness finding. So what we saw this year was that while they were all correctly calculated, there were a few that slipped past the 45-day mark. So that summarizes what's included in the university's portion of the letter. I'm not going to go into details on the college portion, but I've included on page six the different components of, sections of this letter that does have comments. And while none of these are, you know, significant efficiencies and, and material matters, a lot of the comments do get put into the various letters, because we do visit, you know, all of the campuses. We see some processes that are being done more efficiently at some of the campuses, and where we're visiting other colleges that aren't using those same processes. We do usually recommend that they put in a, a process that we've seen elsewhere, if it does tend to be more efficient. So a lot of the comments have to do with efficiencies. But that concludes the management letter portion. If there are no comments. All right, we'll move on to the single audit. The single audit is an audit of the university's federal awards. The only major program is student financial assistance. As we've mentioned in the past, all of the other research money goes through the RF CUNY, and there is a separate single audit performed for that money. So principally, the only dollars that are running through on the schedule of federal awards for the university relate to the student financial assistance programs. And this audit is conducted in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the U.S. as well as government auditing standards. The audit is also conducted in accordance with OMB circular A133. And this circular does highlight 14 compliance requirements that they want auditors to look at for the applicable, for those that are applicable for the program. So for example, out of the 14 compliance requirements, there are six that are applicable to student financial assistance. And then we look at those that are directed material. So if there is something that happens to be applicable but not directed material, we would not be looking at that compliance requirement. And for all of the compliance requirements, Aaron's going to highlight them on the next slide, not only are we looking at the compliance aspect, but we're also required to test internal controls over all of the compliance requirements. Aaron, if you can take your next sentence.
On page eight of the presentation, this just lays out all the compliance requirements that Shelley just touched upon. It's just important to note on this that the majority of these, especially as it relates to the special tests and provisions, are tested at the college levels. However, there's four items here that are just tested at Central, which is cash management, matching and earmarking, reporting, and a new requirement this year that was required to be tested is denying students access to lenders and guarantee agencies of their choice. We just had to review the lending policies of the college to ensure that there's no practice of denying certain borrowers to the students.
This came out as a result of the loan guarantee issue about 18 months ago, when there are preferred lenders in place at certain colleges, and we are being asked now for the federal government to look at the policies in place to ensure that there's no practices that are going on at the university.
And then on page nine, this discusses the findings that we had with the A133 audit. The first two findings, O8-1 and O8-2, are findings that we also had in the prior year. The first one relates to timeliness of refunds and post-withdrawal dispersments, which Shelley touched upon a little earlier, because that was a management, management letter comment. We had, out of 179 students tested, we had three findings, which is a pretty small number. But there were no items that related to calculation. It was all timeliness. So there's no question cost for the timeliness. However, there could, there was potential lost interest on late refunds of $808. The second comment related to student status confirmation reports, and out of 72 students, we had two findings. For this item, since it just relates to timeliness, there were no question costs. The third finding related to federal work study, which is a new comment this year. Out of, out of 96 students sampled, there were four students that were not paid the proper amount of work study. The question cost totaled $6, which is clearly immaterial. However, we had to extrapolate this amount over the entire population of federal work study students, and that was above $10,000, which requires it to be reported. And the last finding related-
Was it more, were they being paid more or being paid less?
It was a little of both.
Little of both.
To be clear about that.
And the last comment related to financial aid dispersments. Out of 155 students that we tested, one student was dispersed $824,000, $824 more than they were allotted.
And again, extrapolated, that was over the $10,000 threshold.
Right.
Otherwise, they weren't a big money.
All be kind to the students. The universe is, and these, these look like small samples, but I don't know what the, what the universe is that you sample from. For example, on financial aid dispersments, you sampled 155 students, right? What was the universe that that was sampled from?
We start with details of all of the students from all of the campuses who received federal financial aid. And then we perform a risk assessment, and we either select five or 10 students from each campus. So depending on the results of the previous audits, we make a determination on whether we're selecting five or 10. So for that population, so for that finding, O8-4, 155 students was probably the total that we had selected among the 19 schools. Now, for example, the finding above that had 96 students. Essentially, we do use the same sample for all of our test work. The government requires us to select a minimum of 30. So that's our starting point, and then we work up from there. So we generally use the same sample for all the pieces of, of test work.
So this is not a real random sample where you can extrapolate to come up with probabilities and things of this nature. This is, this is more of, what did, well, I don't know the term that you would use in audit statistical sampling, but it's, this is not a representative sample to the extent that you could extrapolate and put confidence levels as you are in compliance and so forth. It's more judgment sample.
It is more judgment, exactly.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Thank you both.
Okay.
Thank you, Barry. Now for the big numbers, let's talk about the adopted state budget and its impact on us, and the New York City budget, Mark.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, Albany, as you know, concluded the budget deliberations over the weekend.
Deliberation.
And, and we have, we have, it aged for three days. We have an adopted budget for, for the state of New York. And let me just sort of go over, first beginning with the senior colleges, where we sort of began and where we sort of ended. The governor's executive budget included, for the senior colleges, two key provisions. One, a, well, actually a reduction in state support of approximately $65 million that was offset by an increase in tuition and other revenue of $115 million that was related to a proposal for $600 increase in tuition for undergraduate students, and a 15% of cost of board increase for the rest of the classes of, of students. And that generated the $110 million of the $115. And that enabled the university to have an increase in funding of $50.8 million in the executive budgets to enable the university to meet its continuing obligations in fiscal 2010, and to also, more importantly, as a result of a, a tuition policy that for the first time returned tuition revenue to the university for investment purposes, enabling a $22 million investment program at the university. And that was what was very different about this executive budget than every other budget in the past 30 years. Whenever there was a, a substantial reduction in state support, it was always completely offset by a tuition increase. So students would thus pay more to either maintain service, service levels or actually reduce service levels. So this was a very innovative proposal and was sort of consistent with the university's compact initiatives. But more importantly, it enabled a measure of stability in the budget going forward that would allow us a modest investment program. The budget also included, however, a $20 million challenge for the university to continue to reduce costs and to focus that reduction in the so-called non-core areas, outsider academic and student support services. And thus, it represented the only real challenge that we had for the senior colleges in the executive budget. The legislature, and in part, a lot of this, a lot of the restorations and, and other changes in the budget was enabled by the, the fact that the Congress passed a stimulus package that generated $24 billion over two years to the state of New York, and thus enabled the state of New York to revisit some of the components of the budget. And in our case, for the senior colleges, it, it resulted in the full restoration of the $20 million challenge that we had at the senior college. So, so that, the university, which was already in a pretty fairly strong position, all other things being equal, in the executive budget, got a little bit stronger as a result of the, the $20 million restoration. So that's really good news. And it enabled the university to sort of focus on the $22 million investment program. I'll have some caveats to that at the end of the report, but that's where the legislature would like for, and the governor would like for the university to proceed with. The other key component had to do with the out years on tuition policy. There was a lot of concern that it was only 20% of the tuition revenue that was being returned to the university. So what the legislature and the governor agreed to is that in fiscal 2011, 30% of the tuition revenue would be returned to the university. In 2012, it would be 40%, and 2013, it would be 50%. So all other things being equal, we can count on at least an increment of another $10 million in 2010, another 10 above that in 2012, another 10 or 11 in 2013. And that will clearly help the university in its planning efforts, knowing that, again, all other things being equal, you have some sense of what the revenues are going to be coming into the future. And that, frankly, is new. We hadn't quite been there before. We'd have to test it to see how well that, that works out. So that was a very, very important innovation, that's at the senior colleges. For the community colleges, the, the one challenge was the, in the executive budget, was that there was a reduction of 10% in the funding per FTE for the community colleges. That meant that approximately $17 to $18 million was going to be reduced from the amount that would otherwise have been given to the, to the university, just both CUNY and SUNY. And this was more specifically tied to the stimulus package in the Congress. That was completely restored by the legislature and, and the governor's agreement. So that netted out to be another 18, 17 and a half to 18 million dollars in additional support for the community colleges. And that really does strengthen the community colleges. That was the biggest challenge that we had going forward. And so i- i- in totality, the, the operating budgets for both senior and community, at least from the state side, were significantly strengthened in this, in this budget. The, and now let me just give you the caveat. But before that, to that, let me also say that in the area of financial aid, the governor's executive budget had about $49 million, $47 million in planned reductions in financial aid, most of which was related to a proposal to change the full-time credit level from 12 to 15, and to a number of other things that would have resulted in our students at CUNY bearing its disproportionate share of the, of the savings. And it generated a lot of concerns about the university, about the, the actual impact that it would have. And there were also proposals to eliminate graduate TAP and a number of other changes, all of which were restored in part again because of the use of federal stimulus dollars to strengthen the financial aid budgets. The one TAP change that, that the legislature agreed to was the consideration of public pensions in the calculation of income. Current law, up until now, the law exempted public pension from income for the calculation of, of, of TAP eligibility. And, and that generated, by accepting that, that generated $11 million in savings in the TAP program that is obviously going to, to reduce the deficit. So that was the one major TAP proposal that the legislature accepted. Everything else that we were concerned about primarily were, were restored. And that, that's good for the students, because it comes also in the midst of additional federal stimulus dollars that enhance the Pell Grant program for colleges, college students from around the country. So on the financial aid front, I think we're in good shape. We start off in good shape with this budget, and, and here comes the caveat. The caveat is, you know, do these numbers, can these numbers hold? We know, we know, we know the environment in which we're in. We know what happened this year. We had, we had an adopted budget. At the end of the day, we had to cough up almost $70 million in support from the senior colleges, because the budget did not hold in the current year. And, and we will be very, monitoring it very closely with the fiscal monitors, the independent fiscal monitors will be weighing in on whether this budget will collapse in three months, or whether or not the revenue estimates that they have put in place are reasonable and sustainable, and whether or not the proposed planned reductions that are also embedded are actually going to be carried out. And the reason for that is that we need to be very careful not to, you know, make an investment program of $22 million two months from now as part of an allocation, only to be in September and October withdrawing those resources. And so we'll be monitoring it very carefully. And, and that's really all I can say. A lot of people are still sifting through this budget, and the state budget division is required to actually issue a report. The state controller will issue a more detailed report in the weeks ahead, and we'll be in a position to communicate with you what level of investment programs we are going to carry out in 2010. But I think it's fair to say, because I don't want to be too pessimistic here, that it's, it's hard to imagine the state of New York getting $24 billion in additional support over two years and not strengthening something. And, and given that the university will be raising tuition, and that our, the way in which we see the revenues coming in, and the enrollment levels continuing to grow, we really do see an investment program. The only question is, what is the size of that investment program, whether or not we embed continuing obligations into the out years as a result of that investment program. But we'll have plenty of time between now and the beginning of the fiscal year to, to work that through. But we're fairly optimistic that we'll be able to do a modest investment program, and, and that the worst-case scenario is probably a measure of stability. And that's not a bad place to be in this particular environment, if your best case, or your worst-case scenario is, is a stable budget environment. So we're, we're pretty pleased with what happened in Albany. On the city side, the, the mayor is weighing the, like we are, the adopted budget in the state and the impact on the city of New York. We, the preliminary budget already included substantial reductions in city support for the community colleges. But I reminded you the last time that it was a preliminary budget, and a lot of it had to do with their budget negotiation posture, that is, the mayor's budget negotiation posture with the city council. We are all aware that the city of New York is under a maintenance of effort requirement in funding for the community colleges. So there's, there's very, there's only so much that the, the city can do in terms of budget reductions. They have to maintain effort, and by that, I mean they have to give us exactly what they have, they gave us this year. And so while their executive budget proposal, or the preliminary budget proposal included $46 million in reductions, they have to work out with the city council how to move that number up and, and restore those. We have concerns about prospective collective bargaining agreements in the out years, and whether or not those will be, you know, forced to be absorbed by the university. But I think that between the collective, between what the state actions and the city's support, we are likely to be in a, in a stable budget environment for the community colleges. But that's only for the community colleges in terms of their operating budget, because there are other areas of the budget that the city of New York finances, most likely, most prominently, the Peter L. Valone Scholarship Program of $7 million. And all those other programs will be very much challenged in a, in a very difficult budget environment. So we're not sold out of the woods for the community colleges. And I go back to the actions of this board in November, when it authorized increases of up to $400 in tuition. support, we are likely to be in a, in a stable budget environment for the community colleges. But that's only for the community colleges in terms of their operating budget because there are other areas of the budget that the city of New York finances, most likely, most prominently, the Peter S. Ballone Scholarship Program of $7 million. And all those other programs will be very much challenged in, in a very difficult budget environment. So we're not sort of out in the woods for the community colleges. And I go back to the actions of this board in November, when it authorized increases of up to $400 in tuition. That is why we are talking about the measure of stability we're talking about. But it is because of those actions. Otherwise, we would be obviously very supportive of what the state is doing, but we would be in a challenging budget environment were it not for that. So we will be, in order to meet the growing enrollment, particularly at our community colleges, last year they grew at a rate of 8%, to be able to make investments in full-time faculty and student support services to, to not slip further and further behind in the percent of instruction taught by full-time faculty and meet, meet the needs of those students. Now, the mayor's executive budget is not released until the end of this month, or maybe the beginning of April, so there'll be a lot of going back and forth between now and then. But I think that, you know, the city council is, as they always are, they're very strong supporters, like the members of the legislature, and they'll find a way of, of sort of, you know, giving us a, a measure of restoration, hopefully beyond what they're required to do by law, to enable us to, to not only be strengthened, but perhaps when we visit the tuition policy, not have to go up as high as 400, maybe a little bit less than that. But that'll have to wait, the final budget deliberations between now and then. And I think that's my full report.
Thank you for your report. Any questions?
Questions? So is the senior college tuition now set at 600?
The chancellor will be at a full board meeting, reporting on exactly what we're going to do. That is clearly the direction that we're heading. The, the budget that we have is, is based on that, and so if we don't do the 600, we can't do the $22 million investment program. But, but I will, you know, await the chancellor's full report to the committee, excuse me, to the full board. And the reason for that, and that being, being more clear today, is for what I just said. There'll be lots of independent assessments of the state adopted budget. We're still going through all the numbers, making projections about enrollment for the next year, and we'll be in a much better position to make that, that final recommendation at the full board meeting.
I have a quick question. Based on the stimulus package, the funding that comes to CUNY, what will happen when the federal government stops funding the programs for us? What is our contingency plan? Because I, I was a student at Baruch College, and we studied the Great Society from Lyndon Baines Johnson. We gave loads of money to every state, a trickle-down effect, but no one read the fine print and said, after three years, you have to fund us on your own. And everybody scrambled for it. So where do we stand?
Well, the, it's an excellent question. The, the one, the one item that is, I mean, the entire budget for the entire state of New York was obviously enhanced by the, by the, by the stimulus, by the stimulus resources and the ability of the government to fund a number of things. In our case, in the case of higher ed, it was expressly tied to A to community colleges. So that, that $18 million figure. And I think the, the answer is that, that obviously, you know, one of the things that the chancellor called upon CUNY to do as part of our budget planning over the, not only the short term but the long term, is to establish a set of working, budget-working groups. So we could, you know, really drill down the overall budgets of the university and really sort of begin a planning effort today that in the first instance scans the entire universe, how we spend our resources, how we manage our resources. Frankly, in, at least being in a position to be informed as best we can about what our options are. And, and I suspect that at the April board meeting, we'll have more details on this, but we will be laying out over the next year a set of options for restructuring if it were to become necessary. Now, $18 million is still $18 million. It's not, it's not, it's not $100 million. You know, one of, one of the criticisms that the, that the federal stimulus is, of the federal stimulus is that it did very little for higher ed. So in the one case, we're not as dependent on, on the stimulus package as, let's say, the Board of Ed is, where billions and billions of dollars was used to that. It was $18 million. And I think in, in a system this size, and when you, when you get three years to plan for $18 million, it is not that much of a challenge. But having said all that, we are, we are positioned to, to be as informed as possible that if necessary, take the kind of actions as the board to consider to reduce the cost of the system in the event that that money was suddenly-
The other thing we can do, we won't spend all $18 million on things that reoccur. Some of the $18 million will be spent on purchases.
Right. It's a perfect example of the decade of the science. But I think this, this budget request that the trustees approve will guide the investment program. And in there, you have a, you have a decade of the science proposal, for example, and in high-level or instrumentation costs are one-time costs. They're not going to give you any fringe benefit in pension obligations going forward. And I think Alan, the vice chancellor, Dorban is absolutely right. The, that is how we will sort of be a little conservative going forward so that we don't put ourselves in a very difficult position three years from now.
They don't want presidents to think that there's, you know, a wonderful trove of cash coming, and then three years from now, it's, okay, now you fund it on your own.
No, we have some lessons, I remember, from the security initiative of a number of years ago, 10 years ago, when, in the Clinton administration, they funded a lot of security, and after five years, you know, you're on your own. So we have a little experience with that. Exactly.
That's right, that is. Same old, same old.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any other comments? Any other discussion items? I'm Mr. Jordan. Thank you. Happy, happy pass, all day.